...at nine a.m., we're going to get started. Commissioner Yauer?
Here.
Commissioner Gonzalez is not here. Judge Shaw is here. Commissioner Schmidt?
Here.
Please stand and join us in the conference. Thank you.
Everybody, Father, we ask you to be with us today as we consider this for the county. We thank you for listening to the way, and we ask you to keep people safe on the road in this precious place. In Jesus' name we pray.
Amen.
And to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On the agenda is the public hearing to receive public comments regarding the creation of one whole county energy transportation reinvestment fund in the county pursuant to Senate Bill 1747. Will you please come in at nine o'clock, whatever you have? Go ahead, David. Do you want to start with this?
Please. Well, as you know, we're here to open a public hearing to collect comment from citizens about Senate Bill 1747, which was appropriated with money from House Bill 1025. That's where the money comes from, implementation. Spending that money is Senate Bill 1747. It requires the establishment of county engineer, county energy transportation reinvestments, which is the purpose of the public hearing this morning. And so we're interested to take a comment about the effects of oilfield industry on county roads, also the potential boundary of the district, one or more, as it may be, and anything else having to do with implementation of 1747. So with that, Judge, I'll turn it over to the public.
Would anybody like to make any comments?
I've got a couple of questions. Under what scenario would you have multiple turds?
You can, you can, you're allowed by the bill to create one or more. It's a convenience. It doesn't really matter how many there are. You can create one that's only a portion of the county. In Carls County's case, the entire county is really affected. So it makes sense to include the whole county, whether it be one turd or more than one turd. You can do it based on political circumstances. Let's say commissioners each wanted to have a turd that represented their boundary. You could do that. Personally, I think one for the whole county is sufficient. But if there's reasons to go beyond that, I would love to hear those ideas to that, with the turds and the property tax, sales tax, and other tax. Well, it's the way that the county does business now. Certainly include both sales tax and property tax.
For the record, the city doesn't oppose the county for the turds. The concern is, is under state law, we can have overlapping turds, but under Senate Bill 1747, it's still not clear if it would inhibit the city from doing turds on its own within its municipal waters. So all I'm saying at this point is we're, as a city, in support of Senate Bill 1747 and the method in which the county is looking forward to facilitating improvement in our streets and roads. But given if something does come up later, we're investigating to now find out if there is an implementation from Senate Bill 1747, then we'll come back to Commissioner's Court.
Well, my understanding is that the turds is the county's portion of the tax bill. It wouldn't have anything to do with state taxes, hospital districts, anything else like that, like the school district?
Aside.
And ours as well. It's just if they're something that kind of presented with the city. But for now, we're supportive.
But, Father, you wish the city to be excluded from the county turd?
No, that wasn't at all. Because it doesn't apply to the city's sales tax or the city's property. It was just that there's some obscure language that creates a wall preventing us from looking forward with a turd from the county. We don't want to address that. Not yet.
I will say that the Texas Transportation Code, state law, has been around for a long time allowing the creation of transportation zones like this. This is a special county energy transportation zone, but it refers back to that same state law, the creation of the turds. So it's not something new. It goes through. It's been around for years.
May I probably answer a question or something like that? We can come through the comment room. And I can get some kind of responses.
What are the total dollars available in this kind of program? Not talking about Carls County, but all counties.
House Bill 1025 set up 450 million, and half of that is a portion to TextDOT. The other half is a portion to the county. The state then takes, I think it's $500,000, out of that 225 million for administration costs that they intend to expect. And so the total amount available to all 254 counties is 224,500,000 dollars.
Is there going to be a committee designed or pointed to reach county and say, overwatch this program?
The turds that we're considering creation of is required in order to apply for the grant money that's available, 224 million. There will be an advisory board associated with the creation of that turd. Beyond that, there's nothing else.
How are the funds, once they're allocated to the county, how are those funds going to be allocated or utilized?
Well, the funds are required to be utilized. They are, it's a reimbursable grant. So the county must expend the funds on appropriate construction to either improve against something that's anticipated or to repair something that's already been damaged. And once both the funds have been expended properly and the request is made for reimbursement, the state will afford the money as reimbursement to the county.
Is this a state advisory board?
It's a county advisory board.
It'd be a county advisory.
There's two public members in between one and three private members that are on the advisory board.
That's a question you were asking.
The advisory board that I mentioned?
Define the members of the board again?
It's required by law that there be two public members.
Are you talking like the Lakers efficient?
No.
Just two public members.
Two public members.
It's not defined beyond public members. And then three in the oil and gas industry. Up to three. One, at least one, up to three members in the oil and gas industry. And Commissioner's Court is responsible for setting up and appointing those members.
For the courts, I've been a bit for the record. I attended the TextDOT meeting on the 21st in Tyler, and TextDOT adopted the rules they have, which they are allowed now. They were public, for public comment or a publishing period. Those were adopted with some minor changes, and they're on the TextDOT website. I haven't had an opportunity to look at them this morning, but they're basically with very minor changes to the rules that were published that we already have. The second item on the agenda that affected 1747 was number nine, and they approved the dispersing of the funds. They established a timeframe. The county's, all counties, are locked into a window, one week. All applications have to be submitted to TextDOT between February the 7th and February the 14th. They can't be submitted prior to that, and they won't accept them after that. So we're, we're in a one-windowed opportunity to get our application prepared or submitted.
Electronic?
Yes, to the TextDOT website. The other issue on that particular point that I think is really important, I shared with David this morning. There were, there were questions about whether or not they were going to disperse half the money the first year of the biennium, and then the remainder the second year of the biennium. Their rule that they adopted was to disperse 100% of the funds to first go around. So the county's just not prepared to not get their application submitted that one window. The way I understand the rules, that would be their only opportunity to go for the funds. Okay? Any questions? Any questions from the public or the court?
Do we have the requirements of what they're going to ask for in that application yet?
Yes, those are set up in the rules. They're, yes.
And that's what you're doing, right?
Yes.
So they're going to ask for at least, there's four areas, four categories. There's 20% will be allocated according to the weight tolerance permits ratio, 20% will be allocated according to the oil and gas production taxes, 50% will be allocated according to well completion ratio, and then again, 10% will be allocated according to the volume of oil and gas waste and check to finish.
Which we looked at right now. We have the highest number of completions and producing amounts.
You're going to go back to 2013, 2012, correct?
I believe it's the previous fiscal year. Actually, those numbers, the actual numbers are supposed to be published on the TextDOT website today. I'm assuming that's later on today. Now, the actual amount of money that the county's eligible for receipt depends on which counties apply and which counties don't apply. So if, if only a portion of the counties apply, then they'll take it and spread that over the ones that actually apply.
How much do you, in a heap of spade, would be disbursed in Carls County? I met with John Burton, who is the Deputy Director of TextDOT, after the meeting, and he told me that if every county in the state applies and receives their portion, which would be our smallest number, we would be in the 6 million to 8 million range. He said if those counties that are only eligible for a small number of dollars don't think that it's worth their time and they don't apply, we could be in the 10 to 15 million range, which is what we've budgeted for. He said in absolute best-case scenarios, if all of the top few counties apply, it could be as high as 25 million, but he does not anticipate that. My next question would be, I guess, to be directed towards the Commissioner's Court. Just say we put a rough number, say it's somewhere in between, let's say 20 million dollars. Do we have money to, as I understand your comments, do we have to actually pay for roads to be repaired or brought back to some standard? We pay for it, and then we, if we're, all of our stuff?
It's reimbursed, yes.
That we would submit something to the state, and we would be reimbursed for that amount of money?
That's correct.
So my question is to county, Commissioner's Court, how much money do we have, if we're approved for any amount?
We set aside 1.5 million dollars for a 10% match. So even if we do the million dollars at a time, there's always time to turn that and make that happen. And that's why it's called a reimbursable grant.
We have to pay for it first, Maurice.
I understand that.
We have to pay for it. We do have money which we intend to invest, or we have invested, and intend to invest to see what we can get back.
Is this 1.5 million dollars, is this money already started from the bridge?
Yes.
Yes, it's already allocated.
It's in it, but our match is what you can move.
Okay, so if, yes, my next question would be, let's just say we give the minimal amount, a million dollars, 2 million dollars, whatever the minimal amount is, when does that leave broke? Does that leave broken bridge? Anything to do with? We can't. I really think from my conversation with Mr. Burton, that the minimal amount will be taken. I don't anticipate it being any lower than that.
The monies will have to be separated between the grant projects as well as normal operating projects. So the two monies will be separated. You can't have, you can't, you cannot, from what I understand, you cannot take a, when we turn in our stuff, we have to have designated roads already that we plan to work on. We have to have a projected cost analysis. Everything has to be done. So the state will pick up their little packet, whatever, and say, all right, county road X, Y, Z. Carls County plans to do this, this, and this, X, Y, Z. And we have to submit a plan with that, with the submit for each road. And that's what we did with the engineers.
My question is, I guess, if we stated?
We have 10 years to do this, right?
Well, there's, I think it's a three-year time check.
Three-year.
But, but let's just, let's just go through some numbers. If we get 15 million, like Mr. Mitchell mentioned, and we did that over 30 months, and that's about 500,000 a month, and it flows to the contractor, it would be about 500,000 a month. So the county would have to have their match of 1.5 million, plus they'd have to be able to float 500,000 over the way you want TextDOT to reimburse it. And usually, TextDOT will reimburse it within about 10 to 15 days.
So are we, are we using money out of the road and bridge operating budget? Or is this a 1.5 million for this particular bill?
It's for this bill. We, we, in the budget, when we constructed the budget for the road and bridge, that was one thing that Ronnie talked about. He said he wanted to make sure we had at least 10%. It was in the road and bridge budget, but it's not for the road and bridge operating budget.
It's specifically designated to Senate Bill 1747. Is that correct, Michelle?
Yes, it's in Marx. Nothing else.
And it can't be used for anything else.
Did you get your question answered?
Another question. Economic disadvantage, like what's placed upon the county? How does that apply to this?
Well, that reduces the normal match for the county, 20% down to 10%. So a few counties in the state, I guess about 50 or so are disadvantaged.
58%.
So they said a number of 58% isn't? It's at least 50% makes you disadvantaged. 58 just means that we're 80%.
We're higher than 50%.
Right.
It's not even, it's a high disadvantage.
It's the number of low-income family households in the county. So if you look at that number, and as long as it's 20 to 50%, then you get that disadvantaged plus, I guess.
Don, the woods turned around. They were at 10% with us, and flipped over to 20. It sort of changed when we said.
So what I was just worrying about, that adjustment, called an adjustment, and what is it adjusting? It really, it's not used. It's just benchmark is 50%.
That means Carls gets a 90-10 grant as opposed to the which, just like you said, it's an 8-20 grant. Anyone else? Anything? Now's the time.
Are the contract that you've recently?
They'll need to be advertised, and they'll go through a competitive bid process based on typically low bid, unless there's some overriding circumstances to be addressed.
There was some language, I was thinking about some county being through with the sound, I'd asked if, you know, on their match, if they would provide like labor and equipment to match their, for their bank.
Normally, that sort of thing, in-kind services, is allowed. That has not been specifically mentioned in the rules or anything else, one way or the other. I presume that that could be done as well. I'm not sure how the county would accomplish that at this point, but we'll have to ask TextDOT if that would be allowed, the expense. And usually, there's a set of guidelines that are used to establish the cost for equipment and the labor cost and overhead charges that the county would incur. And that's how you determine the exact match the county would provide in that situation.
Because my understanding also that if the counties, there are some monies left over, like not everybody applied, and the city was safe, a million dollars left over, they would be divided among the counties that were applying?
That's correct. In the, in the bill, in the rules, it so states that if they don't get applications from everyone, then they'll take what money should have gone to the counties who did not apply, and they'll reapportion that into the applications of the ones who did. So this possibility, like Mr. Mitchell was mentioning, that if it doesn't all get asked for, then there could be another round of funding available.
There won't be another round of applications.
Yeah.
To re-divide the funds in the street. Maurice, I'm going to ask this question. Will the charge of the advisory board be to select these kind of the roads and streets?
No, not really. I think that they can advise, it is an advisory board, they can advise the Commissioner's Court on what they want to do. So the actual selection, selection would go to the Commissioner's Court. They give it to the advisory.
One of the things that we want to make sure of, which we've been talking about this whole thing, beginning of the process, is to make sure that each precinct was evenly distributed, that it wasn't going to be a heavy side here and a heavy side there. And if you look at the drilling activity, each, each one of the precincts has been affected. The northern end different than the southern end. But, you know, demographically, it might not be aligned, but they all have been affected. And I think we might talk about that. If there's, if there's equal distribution, there's equal damage. So to ensure fairness to the citizens, yes, we're not, it's not all going to go, you know, to the northern end or all to the southern. We're looking for equal distribution.
2010, there was a map that showed the county, maybe 2010, that showed how the county broke out into oil and gas. North of the county was oil. I think it got toward the middle of, toward the, toward the middle of the county, you had, you had more like oil and gas, then you had, middle of the zone, you had condensate, and the forest out in the county, you had just dry gas. So the whole county is affected, as well as the maps that have gone up to different areas within the county.
David, you have been a preliminary engineering on much of our roads. Yes. We selected 20 roads and analyzed those for drainage and repaving, and I think the list was about leading to 5 million worth of construction. How close are you to having it ready to go out for bids? I think we're ready now. There's other components of the application. Well, not for bids, I'm sorry. We won't be able to actually start work on this until you've applied and been okay for the grant money. And we would have to do the design work. We have not done specific design. We've done preliminary design, just looking at conceptual projects. So there's still a few decisions to make, some plans to prepare. It's going to take about three months of the day. It's time to start before we're ready for the request for bids on the first project. And it would be in the county's interest to spread those projects out over a period of time, so that we don't inundate all the contractors at one time.
If we inundate, what could be taking bids in early summer?
That would be the earliest, yes. Today's best guess, yes.
In all of your house history, you are actually looking at eight roads rather than resurfacing roads with a high-quality road base.
Well, the initial estimates basically assumed an easy-to-care-for road. And so for our initial thoughts, we were expecting that we'd do two-course type surface treatments, something that's easy to maintain, with a high-quality base beneath that. So that's, that's kind of the setup at this point. Asphalts, you know, it presents some problems, good surface, but it presents some problems in terms of how you maintain it. We're now going back to re-asphalt. So I think for, for initial start, two-course surface is what we're expecting.
Based on today's thought, what do you expect of the cost to repay or to re-surface a road, a high-quality road base, for one mile?
The estimates that we turned back to the county last month, I think generally were about 1.2 to 1.3 million dollars for?
For what base?
For doing the whole road, everything. Widening it, base, subgrade, surface, drainage, everything.
Maurice, that was basically, I think David said he had kind of created a road project to be a little bit more, that the cost would look more than what it would actually maintain.
These are budget numbers that we came up with. That's what Commissioner's Court decided, that they were budget numbers. They're not, obviously, we won't know the actual number until a contractor puts a price on it. Hopefully, it's less than that.
Maurice, that's what his budget team has figured out, to pay go roads, so he has the maximum of the group's spend. This will be up to the Commissioner's Court, the committee in the Commissioner's Court to decide, do we just do a road base on this, or do we pave this road?
One of the things that's going to be a couple of the county, we have not been successful with this since I lived in this county, is maintaining the roads once they're, once they're completed. We have no maintenance, I've never had that maintenance, but, and we've put all this money in the state into these roads, and we have no plan, equipment, personnel to maintain them. We're just, we're just throwing money down a rattle.
And my answer to you on what kind of road, what kind of surface, is predicated on what the county's capabilities are to maintain the roads. So it's, it's within their abilities to maintain a road like that, which is one of the reasons we're considering doing.
Maurice, as Commissioner, I will not vote to spend 15 million dollars total on paved roads.
I agree with you, but my point is still, when there's, when there's paved road and when there's a high-quality road base, the county has not demonstrated in the last six or seven years I've lived here, that they have the ability, the equipment, or the personnel to maintain the road that we have today, what they can do. I want to know how they could be, they have no plan in, for right now.
Well, you're, you're, I'm not trying to argue with Mr. Yoder, but?
No, I'm trying, I'm bringing it up on behalf of the Commissioner's Court.
But the assumption that you're making is that they had the wherewithal to do what needed to be done, and they really didn't have enough money to do what needed to be done. It's very expensive to build a road service to all of the, it's just serving the general county population that's different.
You're missing my point. My point is, you put the road base down, everything is great, it isn't happening. Is the county prepared to maintain it because they haven't shown the ability to do that in the past?
I don't think the county's ever been a decision to maintain anything in the past.
I agree with you, but?
Yeah, but, but Matt, what I'm saying is, once we get this kind of a jumpstart, I think then through proper planning, yeah, you may have to buy some additional equipment to maintain stuff later on. You're going to have to. There's no question about that. But I think once you get to the jumpstart, there shouldn't be no reason that on the record scheduled, either through contracting or through in-house planning, you should be able to maintain it.
The Commissioner's Court's going to overwatch this, right?
Yes, it would. I've been overwatching a road just blow away. They, they came out and fixed mine, and two months later, it's already bled through back to where it was. So you got to put a top on it to hold it. With those good money after that.
I understand what you're saying, Commissioner Shendel, but the reality of it is, they did county road 330, end to end, about, about two and a half miles. They actually did a very good job. That has not been maintained. They haven't seen, seen any type of maintenance put on that road in, going on two years now. And now it's deteriorated basically where it was before. So my, my question still stands, the Commissioner's Court does not go out there and they don't supervise or check their roads to make sure that whoever's in charge of road and bridge is doing their job. And as they brought it forward to the Commissioner's Court before, and you've done nothing. So for us to put whatever we get, 8, 10, 15, 20 million dollars into those roads, and the Commissioner's Court does not do its job to make sure that it's maintained well, that we're just pouring money down a rattle?
I think we're totally off the public hearing with 1747.
No, we're not.
Yes, we are.
No, you don't make that determination?
No, 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 no.
I live on a county road.
Mr. Yoder, we can't dedicate all of our time to your county road. There's 580 miles of county roads in Carls County.
You're missing the entire point, as usual. My point is, we have no maintenance plan for this county for any type of road, much less new roads. Somebody has to do something, instead of just doing it the same old way. Business as usual is not business as usual.
Well, I'm sorry, we can't dedicate all this money to your road. It's going to have to be equally spread.
Where do you get my road? I'm talking about the entire county. There, you know, there is no maintenance plan for this county, and that's, you know, a basic requirement. The Commissioner's Court makes sure that happens.
And Maurice? And Maurice, you're right. I'm not going to argue with you on that one. But once we get this jump start, get some of these roads paved, the man behind you, Mr. Woznick, whoever's in charge of road and bridge at the time, will have to come up with their plan and to maintain what we have. We're going to have to maintain what we have. But we, all we're doing now is putting out fires, putting out fires, putting out fires. And you can't keep always putting out fires.
Who's going to be responsible? Because today, nobody, not anybody on the Commissioners' Court, or whoever's been in charge of road and bridge, is going to take responsibility to maintain the road. You know, it's me and the major portion of the monies that are brought into this county are from people who live in the country. And they see the least return on any of these funds that the county is allocated to the county. And nobody, you know, nobody on this Commissioners' Court in the past, up until today, has taken, taken the responsibility to oversee road and bridge.
They didn't have the road administrators' call? I mean, when we went to the unit system, I don't know what the.
I still believe that the county, it's still in.
Yeah. Because when we went to the unit system, I think a lot of their duties went away. That's your road administrators' problem and responsibility.
It does not dissolve Commissioners' Court from responsibility to make sure those roads are maintained.
But if the law says that it's the road administrators' position, not the Commissioners' Court.
I'd like, somebody show me the law.
Well, I don't know, I'm just saying that once we went to the roads, the unit system, the precinct.
But that's true. But it doesn't obviate that they at least check the roads, which they don't.
I do. I do. I call in and talk to them all the time.
Do you? I'd like to see.
They have, they have.
I want to see pictures. I want to see them. I do.
Mr. Yoder, let me tell you one other thing. I've been talking to Ronnie after he came in as interim administrator about getting a maintenance program set up where he made sure that every road was graded at least once a year, and more often than that if possible. So heavier traveling was more often than that. But we're talking about getting a maintenance program set up. So we are looking at, we've been talking about, we've been trying to get a maintenance program set up. So we're not just totally ignoring it.
This has nothing to do with the creation of.
You're wrong.
Industry transportation reinvestment.
You're absolutely wrong. I think these are things that have to be in it, in it, in our responsibilities.
This is about 1747. No, that's incorrect.
Oh, we're not, so that 1747 means we don't have to maintain our roads?
We'd have to read 1747. I wouldn't find that in your mind.
Well, the terms is.
Has to be as.
So does anybody have any more comments about the creation of the terms?
Yes. Are the individuals that are going to be appointed to the board going to be required to live in the county? And I'm not talking about in the cities, I'm talking about in the actual county.
There's two public members, the industry members will not be required to live here. That is fine, for Shannon.
Public industry members not going to resign to Carnes County?
No.
All right, anyone else?
Carol, will you sign the term again, please?
I said, my turn before. Thank you. Thank you, David. Number six is to discuss approve/disapprove a maintenance and supplies contract and do it both in sign for the East Studio 550 coffee machine purchase from the county clerk's office in that area.
We, in the new budget, we were able to purchase a new coffee machine for the office, and it's just a requirement that they have a contract signed. And I accept that.
All right, David, I'll make a motion to approve. Six is.
Carol, will you call up to any of the.
Yes, but will you, will you fill all this out?
Yes, I will.
I'll write the judge in the summary of the contract. I'll second it.
All in favor? Motion carries, carries.
Thank you.
There's only one page though, right, Carol?
Yes.
The other's Dan's.
No, it doesn't.
The next item on the agenda is to discuss approve/disapprove a bond for Dennis Kelly and the State of Bond Dennis for EMS.
I'm closing. Approved bond for Dennis Kelly, any message? I'll second it.
All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries, carries. The next one is. Carol, will you sign the other one?
I'll sign it.
The number eight is acknowledge on record that the purchase of HP Design Jet T2500 close script, multi-functional 36-inch plotter, amount of $9,074.99. That's Brenda's. That's just that she's buying her plotter. She's buying it, but it's over $1,000, so she wanted to know the age of that. And just, one of the things that I told them, don't we just have acknowledge on there when we're purchasing something? Because if anybody's getting in that bind, you're going to save $1,000 or $2,000, there's, I don't think there's anything that's going to stop you from making that commitment as long as you come back and acknowledge it. Okay? So if you feel like they're going to save money, don't, don't wait on us. Put the acknowledgement on there and go ahead and do whatever you need to do, because you are budgeted for those funds. So don't wait for us. Because that can get sticky, because every time we go to buy a big something.
Yeah.
Yes. And so if you need a coffee machine, or you're buying your stuff, as long as you're acknowledging it, that's all we ask you to do. Okay? Don't, don't ask us for permission. You're budgeted. Number nine is consider approve/disapprove a resolution certifying that Carnes County has made a home delivery mill's grant to Trinity County, South Central Texas, for the homebound and a contribution of 79.25. This is from CCST for our mill and will. This one also is already budgeted.
I'll make a motion to approve. I'm not.
All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries, carries. Carol, next. Second, two, do you sign under one? It did not, it just says no, it doesn't have a copy of your name. So if you'll just sign under, hand it back to the other. And then you keep one. The next one on the agenda is to discuss approve/disapprove purchasing a pneumatic roller versus the present place. That's mine. Purchase the pneumatic roller will be more cost-effective for the county.
So here we have, we have this purchase of 2,000, and we have the option to make. All right, we got a, let's start with lease purchase. We have 2,000. We have the option to buy it right now for 6,000. The only reason why I have to make sure, we have to stop it on this date and hope, so this way we don't have any additional funding.
Do you have the 8295816 budget?
Yes.
This one piece of equipment?
Just this one piece of equipment. So, please.
You can buy it, 61?
61, yeah, county. The two payments that should be, I got to get with the county to make sure they're on hot. It's, then go ahead.
She's shaking her head, so she's thinking. That's all we're discussing.
Yes, yes.
I'll make a motion to approve. I have the cannon written.
Do we need to sign anything for you?
Let me get an invoice, because they have to stop it today, and then they'll go ahead and give us an invoice, because we put a couple of days in there that we're going to have to build a store.
Okay, so if we're going to approve purchasing it, can we approve the contract? So we don't have to just come back and add it back on?
Right.
You approve the contract so I can get it to show. Do you add that to your?
I'm going to add it.
Thank you.
Okay, so is this going to go, go to where, pay it like for Winston's cycle, or do we pay it at your 20th century?
All in favor?
Yeah.
I think it's going to be okay. If we have the new contractors, if we're buying it.
We can, yeah, but I mean, I need to specify.
Oh, okay.
Are we going to make a payment on Wednesday? Or are we going to wait till December?
No, 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 wait till December. Yeah, we cannot make a payment, because he's going to add it all to the sign.
Okay.
Number 11 is to discuss approve/disapprove adopting a budget for the county Christmas party, the donated funds were $1,200.
We need to flip that. They need, I'm sorry, they need to be certified first and then budgeted.
Okay.
Go to 12, 12 first and then actual 11.
Okay, thank you, bye. So number 12, we go to certified donation received by the county employee Christmas party. 200 from Wardall and 1,000 from Dean Brandon. So.
He just.
Just so we know that they're certified. Now we can approve the adoption of the budget for that $1,200.
I'll second it.
All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries, carries. Number 13, please scratch. Number 14, acknowledge on record that the San Antonio Food Bank will be a part of the Holy Trinity Catholic Church on December 2, 2013. If something does come up, or we have a funeral, or there is church in session, we will be moving to the law department. Number 15 is to adjourn.
I'll make a little return. I'll second it.
All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries, carries.